Twenty-two dash twelve to order. Cindy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Coke?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Perkart?
Here.
I want to welcome everyone that is in the audience with us this evening. If you are here for an item on the agenda, we would ask for you to wait for that item to come up and address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under public communications to address the council. The next item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. Who have I not ever called on? Can you raise your hands?
Mayor, I'd be happy to do it.
Council member Perkart?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very well done. Thank you.
We're hired.
The next item on the agenda is the agenda approval. Jim, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes this evening.
Counsel, any changes? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Any vote, please?
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Perkart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to public communications, we have one scheduled public communication this evening, and that is a presentation of the community and business survey results from ETC Institute.
Mayor and counsel, this is Janet. I'm online, and I also have Jason Marado with ETC Institute online. He has presented this, or he's going to be presenting these results to you for the community survey. This is the fourth time we have done this. And then also the business survey, and this is the second time we have done this business survey. So I will turn it over to Jason, and he can share the results with you.
Good. Jason?
Yeah, thanks, Shannon. I don't know, you, you can't see my screen, can you, trying to?
No, but give me just a second, Jason.
Okay, great.
Nope, I don't think I'm going to be able to do that, Jason.
Okay. Okay, so I, so you'll just, I guess, run through the slides on your end? Is that how, that will work best?
Yep, I think so.
Okay. Well, I'll start with the, I think, maybe the business survey then. Okay, there we go. Thanks. My name's Jason Marado. I'm with ETC Institute. And we're a marketing and research firm that specializes in conducting statistically valid surveys for local governments. And we just finished conducting both a business and a community survey, the city of Johnson. So today I'm going to go through the highlights for both of those surveys. I think we'll start first with the business survey. And just a little background about ETC Institute. We are based in the Kansas City area, but we're a national leader in providing market research for local governments. We've been doing this type of work for forty years, and in the last ten years alone, we conducted surveys in more than nine hundred communities across the, more than a thousand communities all across the country. So this is really the type of work that we specialize in. This is just a quick rundown of what I'll go through today. I'll go over the purpose and methodology of the survey. The bottom line upfront are our main conclusions from the survey, and then we'll go through the major survey findings to show how we can improve. So there are several reasons to conduct a survey like this. One is to get an objective assessment of how satisfied businesses are with major city services, and also determine ways to improve city services for Johnson businesses. And then also, we're hoping with the survey to identify issues that impact the business community. Next slide. So the business survey is a little bit shorter than the community survey. That's five pages long. The community survey, seven pages. This is the second business survey we've conducted for Johnson. First one was back in twenty twenty. The survey was administered by combination of mail, online, and phone to randomly select businesses throughout the city. And a total of eighty business owners and managers completed the survey. Our goal was to have at least seventy-five. So we had a good response. We also had eighty surveys the last time we conducted the survey, a couple of years ago. So here are our main conclusions from the survey. We found that businesses have a very positive perception of the city of Johnson. Ninety-four percent feel Johnson is an excellent or a good place to do business. Businesses also have a very high level of satisfaction with city services. And then the city services that are the most important businesses are police, streets, water and sewer, planning and development, and economic development. We also found that eighty-four percent of businesses feel that improved internet service is important for their business going forward. And the best ways for the city to communicate with businesses is through emails from staff or city leaders, e-newsletter emails, and the city's website. So we'll start by taking a look at the types of businesses that go out of survey. The next slide. So we had a good mix from a lot of different types of businesses. Can you see all the different types of businesses listed there that go out of survey? Next slide. And then we had a good mix from those who have been, had businesses in the city for a long time, as well as some newer businesses as well. So now I'll take a look at the perceptions respondents have in the city. So we asked respondents how they would rate the city of Johnson overall as a place to do business. On the left-hand side, you see that in twenty twenty, eighty-six percent of respondents felt like Johnson is an excellent or a good place to do business, which is a very good number. But in this year's survey, ninety-four percent of respondents rated Johnson as an excellent or a good place to do business. So just about everybody who thought out the survey. And you can see these ratings are much higher than the national average. This is based on a national survey that ETC Institute conducted last year. Nationally, about seventy-six percent of respondents feel their city is an excellent or a good place to do business, compared to ninety-four percent for Johnson. Excellent. And then here we asked respondents how satisfied they are with various aspects of perceptions of the city. The blue or the positive ratings, very satisfied, satisfied. The pink and red are the, are dissatisfied and very dissatisfied, so the negative ratings. So overall, the positive ratings far away the negative. For every single category, eleven percent or less of respondents were dissatisfied, and in most cases, actually even much lower. Next slide. And then when we compare these results to our national average, you can see in most areas, Johnson rates above the US average. There are five areas where you rate significantly higher. That includes the overall plan of safety, overall quality of life, the image of the city, overall quality of city services, and then the quality of new development in the city. So then we also asked businesses to rate their satisfaction with city services. Here we asked businesses how satisfied they are with major categories of services. And once again, the positive range far away the negative. And again, one of the things that really stands out is how few respondents are dissatisfied. For every category, twelve percent or less are dissatisfied, and in many cases, it's below five percent. Next slide. And then when we compare these results to the national average, in all categories, your rates are, results are significantly above the national average. That includes police, fire, streets, overall cleanliness of public areas, stormwater, street maintenance, and then, of course, and codes and ordinances. As a follow-up, we asked businesses which services are the most important to their business. So the most important are police services, street maintenance. Those are the top two priorities. We conducted this business survey a couple of years ago. The other top priorities are water and sewer, planning and development, and economic development. So we also included several questions related to the internet. Slide. We asked respondents how they use the internet at their business. Most use it for email, for the company website. You see, there's really a whole lot of different reasons, as you would expect, why businesses use the internet. Next slide. Then we asked businesses how satisfied they are with their current internet service provider. If you look at the fourth row down, forty-seven percent are satisfied with the overall experience. That's compared to eighteen percent who are dissatisfied. And then over a third gave a neutral rating, which is a rating of a, being a five-point scale. So it's not bad, but really more of an average rating. Businesses were most satisfied with data allowance, and they were the least satisfied with the speed and price. And then we asked respondents how important is improved internet service going forward. Fifty percent of businesses say it's very important, and that their current internet does not meet their needs. Another thirty-four percent say it's somewhat important. They have everything they, they need internet-wise, or don't have everything they need, but have enough to get by. Then only twelve percent say their current service meets their needs. So we've got a few other findings to take a look at. We asked businesses about the workforce in the city. Respondents were most satisfied with education and technical skill of workers, least satisfied with the availability of workers. Next slide. And then we asked respondents which workforce items are the most important to their business. The most important is the availability of workers, followed by the quality. Then we asked respondents if they're considering any of these following actions over the next five years. Almost fifty percent of businesses are planning to hire additional staff. About a fourth are planning to expand and renovate. And then only a very small percentage are planning to close or downsize, or relocate to another location outside of the city. And then we asked respondents what are the best ways for the city to communicate important information to your business? And you can see there are three methods that really stand out: email from staff or city leaders, e-newsletter emails, and then the city's website. So just a quick recap, we saw that businesses have a very positive perception of the city. They're also very satisfied with city services. The most important city services for businesses are police, streets, water and sewer, planning and development, and economic development. And then the majority of businesses feel that improved internet is very important going forward. And the best way for the city to communicate with businesses are email from staff and city leaders, e-newsletter emails, and then the city's website. So that's everything I had for the business survey. Before I go on to the community survey, does anyone have any questions or comments about the business survey?
Also questions or comments? Jason, the only, only comment I have is I'm a little surprised, I'm not surprised at all that they list police services as the most important city service for the businesses. I'm a little surprised that they don't put fire services in the top five as well, but maybe it's because they don't really think about that until they need that service. And, and we hope that they never need that service.
Right, and I, I think that is exactly the reason. They're ranked sixth in importance.
Okay, well, it wasn't that far down.
In the top half, but yeah, that's pretty typical. That's somewhere in the middle towards the top half, but not typically a very top priority. And again, for the reason you say, it's not something that maybe people think about as much and, and, you know, until they really need it, like you said.
Anything else, counsel, before we go to the community survey?
I think this is an observation, the, you know, most things people were pretty positive on, with the one little area that they have concern about on the satisfaction levels, availability of public transportation. So I think that's just something we should acknowledge. But that was the one that, on question four, was the pretty significant difference from the other numbers.
Jason, why don't you go to the community survey?
Okay, sounds great. So now we'll go on to the community survey. So there are several reasons to conduct this community survey. One is to get an objective assessment of how satisfied residents are with major city services, and also to help determine what residents feel are the top priorities for the community. This is the fifth community survey that we've conducted, and a lot of the questions are the same ones we asked in previous years, especially most recently in twenty twenty. So we're able to measure trends from previous surveys, and then we're also able to compare your results with other communities across the country. So I mentioned this is the fifth community survey. The first one was back in twenty thirteen, most recently in twenty twenty. The survey is administered by a combination of mail and online, randomly selected residents. Our goal is to receive at least four hundred completed surveys, and we had an excellent response. We ended up with six hundred and thirty-two completed surveys. And the results of these six hundred and thirty-two completed surveys at a ninety-five percent level of confidence has a margin of error plus or minus three point nine percent. So essentially, that means that if we conducted the survey the same way a hundred times, ninety-five times, the results would be plus or minus four percent from what we're reporting. So the results aren't perfect, but the margin of error is very small. And here we have a map of the city. The red dots are households that completed the survey, so we had a good distribution throughout the city. And this is very similar to what we've seen on previous two community surveys. Next slide. So here are our main conclusions for the community survey. Just like the business survey, residents have a very positive perception of the city. Ninety percent of respondents are satisfied with overall quality of city services, and ninety percent are also satisfied with overall quality of life. And those are some of the highest numbers anywhere in the country, which you'll see in more detail when we get to the benchmarking section. We also found that the city is moving in the right direction. Now, in twenty twenty, overall, the ratings were excellent. They were some of the best in the country. But somehow, the results have actually gotten even a little better this time. The ratings have either increased or stayed the same in sixty-one out of the seventy-two areas that we compared. That includes seventeen areas that had a significant increase in satisfaction. Only two areas had a significant decrease. Slide. And then just like on previous community surveys, we found that satisfaction with city services is much higher in Johnson than other cities. Your rate is significantly above the US average in all forty-one areas. There's a couple of areas that I especially wanted to point out. Satisfaction with the overall quality of city services is thirty-nine percentage points above the US average. And that's one of the most important questions on the survey, because they were asking residents to consider all the services that you're providing, and really give an overall satisfaction rating for how well you're doing. Typically, if the ratings are high for the overall quality of services, it means the rates are very high in a lot of the more specific areas as well. And then another area that stood out is satisfaction with customer service from city employees is thirty-two percent above the US average. That's one of the areas where you rated the farthest above the US average. And the top overall priorities are streets, traffic flow, and recreation programs and services. So we'll start by looking at some general perceptions that residents have of the city. This was the very first question on the survey. We asked residents how satisfied they are with different aspects of perceptions of the city. And again, the results are very, very positive overall. Most residents feel safe in the city, and then ninety percent are satisfied with the overall quality of life, as well as overall quality of city services. Next slide. Here we asked residents to rate their satisfaction with major categories of city services. Here, we're asking residents to rate these areas at the big-picture departmental level. And then later on in the survey, we asked about some more specific areas, categories within some of these areas. So one of the main things that stands out, just like the business survey, is how few respondents were dissatisfied. For every category, eleven percent or less were dissatisfied. In most areas, it's much less than that. Even the lowest-rated areas, which are traffic flow, streets, and codes, even for those, you have significantly more residents who are satisfied, dissatisfied. And the areas with the highest overall ratings for, relate to public safety, fire, EMS, police, maintenance of city parks, maintenance of city buildings and facilities, and water services. Next slide. We also found that residents in all areas of the city are satisfied with the overall quality of city services. Next slide. So here we have a map of the city, and here we broke the results out by census block. So these are very small areas, and what this does is it tells us if residents in different parts of the city are rating services differently. Sometimes what happens is, even if the ratings are very positive overall, once you break it into these smaller areas, you see some areas where residents maybe don't feel like they're getting as good of service as people in other parts of the city. So this first map is for the overall quality of city services, and you can see the entire map is blue, which means that residents in all parts of the city are satisfied with overall quality of city services. This also means you're doing a great job providing services equally all throughout the city. This map is for the value residents receive for tax dollars and fees. This map is completely blue, meaning residents in all areas are satisfied with tax dollars and fees. And this is pretty unusual for this question to be completely blue. Usually, there's at least some areas in the map where residents are not as satisfied as those other parts of the city with the value they're getting for tax dollars and fees. And this map is for the overall quality of life in Johnston, and this map, again, is entirely blue. In fact, there are parts in dark blue, which is the highest possible rating. So this tells us that residents throughout the city are satisfied with the overall quality of life in Johnston. So we also compared your results to other communities, and just like in previous years, your results are significantly higher. In fact, your rate is significantly above the US and the regional average in all forty-one areas that we compared. So for these next few slides, the orange line are the satisfaction ratings for Johnson residents. The light blue are the ratings for Plains Region, which includes the state of Iowa, as well as some surrounding states. And then the dark blue are the ratings from all across the US. So this first chart is for perceptions of the city. Your rates are significantly higher in all areas. One of the ones that especially stands out is the overall quality of city services. We have a ninety percent satisfaction rating. National average is only fifty-one percent. Another one that stands out here is that bottom row, value received for tax dollars and fees. We have a sixty-three percent satisfaction rating, which seems low maybe compared to some of your other ratings on the survey. But you can see the regional and national average are barely over thirty percent. So sixty-three percent satisfaction rating for value for tax dollars and fees is actually really, really good number. Next slide. So this slide is for major categories of city services, and you can see your ratings are significantly above the regional and US average in all categories. What especially stands out here are the ratings for customer service and communication. In both of those categories, your ratings are forty-two percentage points above the US average. Slide. Here are comparisons for public safety, and you can see that in all seven categories, your ratings are significantly above the US average. The area where you rate the farthest above is that second row down, overall quality of police protection. You have a ninety-four percent satisfaction rating. National average is only fifty-five percent. Next slide. And then for parks and recreation, in all six areas, your ratings are significantly above the national average. And you can see this includes a variety of different types of services, including walking and biking trails, shelters, and then different types of recreation programs. And then for maintenance, all areas again significantly above the US average. Streets and sidewalks are a couple of the lower-rated items on your survey, but you can see that's common in other cities as well, because your ratings are still significantly above both the regional and national average. And then all three areas of communication. Again, your results are significantly above regional and national. So I mentioned earlier that things are moving in the right direction. What really stands out about this section is that the results were so positive in twenty twenty, but yet since that time, the ratings have increased in fifty-four out of seventy-two areas, stayed the same in seven, and decreased in only eleven out of seventy-two areas. This includes seventeen areas with significant increases, and by significant, I mean five percent or more, and then only two areas with significant decreases.
All right, Jason.
That's okay. Think back. I think, yeah, that's where we left off. So for these next few slides, the orange are the satisfaction ratings for this survey that we just completed. The light blue are the ratings for twenty twenty, and then the dark blue are the satisfaction ratings for the first year we conducted your survey back in twenty thirteen. So this really shows both the short and the long-term trends. For perceptions of the city, ratings have increased in all six areas compared to last year's survey, with the most significant increase being in how well the city's playing for growth. Satisfaction's increased from sixty up to sixty-five percent. Next slide. For major categories of city services, the ratings have increased in thirteen out of the fourteen areas. The only one that's down is the second row down, city streets. But even that's only down from seventy-three percent to seventy percent, and we saw that number is still significantly higher than other communities. There were six areas that had significant increase in satisfaction compared to twenty twenty. That's maintenance of city buildings and facilities, customer service from city employees, communication with the public. That was one of the bigger increases on the survey. It's up eight percent from the last survey. Recreation programs and facilities is also up eight percent, and then traffic flow and enforcing codes are the other areas with the most significant increases. For public safety, satisfaction has increased in all nine areas. And what's interesting here is in all of these areas, the ratings have been steadily increasing over time. The results improved from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty, and they increased again from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two. The areas with the biggest increases were overall competence and police department employees. That number increased from eighty-four percent last time, which was a really good rating, but now it's up to ninety percent. And then officers' attitudes and professionalism has also increased by five percent since the last survey, increased by nine percent since the first survey back in twenty thirteen. Maintenance, here, overall, the ratings are similar to the last survey. One of the few areas that had a decrease on the survey was maintenance of city streets, with seventy-seven down to sixty-nine percent. Still much better than most other cities, but one of the few areas that actually had a significant decrease in satisfaction. Next slide. And then for communication, all four areas have increased since the last survey. Three areas have increased significantly, not just since the last survey, but also since twenty thirteen. So the availability of information about programs and services, your website, and then the online services offered on the city's website. So now we'll take a look at top priorities. You might remember this from previous years. This is called the important satisfaction rating. And this analysis is based on two sets of data. First, we asked residents how satisfied they are with city services. And as a follow-up, we asked which services should receive the most emphasis from city leaders over the next couple of years. The idea behind this is those areas that have a combination of lower satisfaction, but at the same time are the most important, should be the highest overall priorities focused on over the next couple of years. Doesn't mean you should ignore the other items, but the highest priority items make the improvements, and those areas will impact the greatest number of residents. This first chart is for major categories of city services. Top priorities are streets, traffic flow, and then recreation program facilities. Fourth is enforcing property code violations. Next slide. And this is really just a different way of looking at the same information. On this matrix, if you start at the top, those are the items that have the highest satisfaction ratings. As you move down, the level of satisfaction gets less and less. If you start to the left, those are the areas residents are rated as the least important. As you move to the right, the level of importance gets higher and higher. So the items in that bottom right-hand quadrant, where it says opportunities for improvement, those are the ones that have that combination of low satisfaction and high importance. So you can see that includes streets, traffic flow, recreation programs, facilities, and then enforcing code, property code violations. It's in that quadrant, but it's more towards the, the middle part of the, of the matrix. So really, those other three, with the three arrows are the top three priorities. Next slide. We also created an important satisfaction rating for maintenance. By far, the two areas that are the top priorities are the overall maintenance of city streets and sidewalks. Next slide. So just a quick recap, we saw that residents have a very positive perception of the city. Things are moving in the right direction. It's amazing how much the ratings have increased, considering how positive they were in twenty twenty. They've actually improved the majority of areas since then. They've actually improved the majority of areas since then. Next slide. Once again, your ratings are significantly higher than other cities in every category, especially when it comes to the overall quality of city services, customer service. In the top overall priorities, and these are the same as last year's, or two years ago's survey, streets, traffic flow, and then recreation programs. So that's everything I had for the community survey. Obviously, the results are very, very positive once again. So if that was anyone have any questions or comments?
Well, Jason, I don't have any comments, but, or I have no questions, but I do have a couple of comments. First of all, thank, thank you, and thank Janet for your very good work on conducting these surveys and getting the results and putting them in a form that, that, you know, that we can, we can draw some quick conclusions from it. This was, this was very helpful tonight, having you go through this with us. I, you know, I think that we, as a city council and all of our staff, can be very proud of the results of these, of these surveys. I can tell you that we work very hard to get these kinds of, this kind of feedback from our residents and from our businesses. And, you know, obviously, the hard work that we put into it, you know, is reflected in the, in the results that we got from the surveys. I would suggest that, you know, we, we can always do better, right? We aren't at 100% on any of these yet. So even though we can be very proud of, you know, the, the responses that we got from our residents and businesses, we can't rest on our laurels. We have to continue to, to do the hard work and continue to provide the services, services that our residents and, and businesses expect to receive from us. But we've got, we've got a lot of good people around here committed to, to doing that. And so I'm, I'm confident, Jason, that the next time we do this again, the numbers will only be higher.
Yeah, hopefully so. They've been excellent every year, and they were so good in 2020, I thought it would be tough even to maintain that, but they, yeah, improved in most categories. Really, it's really amazing.
Any other comments or questions?
I just, Jason, did you guys do some, any open-ended questions in the poll, in the survey?
There are a few open-ended questions. That's a, we provided a report that just has those comments listed out.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you did what?
There is a separate report that has the comments listed that we provided, the open-ended comments.
So we'll get the cop, we'll get a hard copy of those, that report at some point?
June 1st, Janet sent out an email that included all of those open-ended responses.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I missed that, okay.
Great.
And then looking at page six of your PowerPoint.
Okay.
It looks like the, there's a kind of a part of the community up in the Northwest Park, Crosshaven neighborhood, that there was no responses from that part of the neighborhood. I wonder, I think some of those folks maybe have a Grimes address, or... So I, I know you guys don't just rely on mail for survey responses. You also have internet, but it was surprising to me that we didn't have a single, what appears to be a single response from that part of the community. And so we might just want to think about, you know, next time we, we do this, to make sure we, I, we include folks, just, they may not have a Johnston address, but they live inside the city of Johnston to make sure we get that covered. So... And then I guess, but the last thing I do want, I really appreciate, you know, the kind of the, the data that you put together here in the way, especially to be able to care, compare it year over year. I think that's one of the real values of using kind of a consistent survey and consistent questions and, and show kind of real trend lines. So I appreciate that. So anyway, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we want to thank you again, Jason, for being with us this evening and making this presentation to us.
Next slide, everyone. Thanks.
Okay, we are still under public communications. We don't have any more scheduled public communications. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Sir? You could state your name and address for us?
Joe Wheeler, 6894 Northwest Beaver Drive, Johnston. I want to thank the council for what they've done, excellent job. My concern is the...
My concern is the Northwest Beaver Drive Trail, which I'm not a part of the trail, but I'm on the opposite side of the street. And they have some problems with the matting and a lot of weeds. And I know Matt's been up there several times talking to different people. I've spoken with H.R. Green, and nobody seems to want to mow what has been put down with the matting, because there's steel stakes in there. And the matting will probably get caught up in their mowers, and then they'll get to fix their mowers or decks or whatever. And I know Matt's been probably inuated with calls as H.R. Green has been done. You know, they told me that they were going to keep the mats down for probably the rest of the year. I don't, I don't think that's, you know, right for us to have to look at all these weeds and not be able to take our mowers in there and hit these steel stakes that they've got that matting down with. So I guess I'd like to find out if there's a better solution for the people that live up there.
Joe, thank you for sharing that with us. Matt, do you have anything you want to share with us on that?
Yeah, I know that we, we need to keep the matting in the bottom of those ditches, because like Joe had stated, the, the grass hasn't fully taken yet, so we don't want to wash the bottom of those ditches out. We can talk to the contractor about getting that mowed. Some folks have continued, or have mowed that. They've just raised their decks up. That was a recommendation of... Okay, we can go through your property and, and collect those that, if, if they've popped out, we can have the contractor come through and get those so that they're not damaging your mower.
Well, once again, I just want to thank the council for doing a great job moving Johnston forward, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Cindy, do we have anybody online?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll move on then to public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening, and that is to conduct a public hearing and consider the following resolution number 22-162, adopting plan specifications, form of contract, estimate of costs. Resolution number 22-163, making award of construction contracts to Jasper Construction Services, Inc. of Newton, Iowa, for the 2022 Newport Vista Storm Sewer and Trail Improvements Project. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:42. David?
Good evening. We had a bid opening a little over a week ago for the Newport Vista project. This is a joint stormwater and trail project in the, in the Newport Vista Ashton Point area. The stormwater project has been in our CIP for some time to create, to correct some localized flooding that happens where the trail crosses. And as, as a result, we would have had to go in and replace a, a portion of the trail. And looking at the remainder of the trail throughout the green belt, there's significant condition issues. And so it was decided that we would package the two improvements together to both improve the trail and address the stormwater project. We did have five responsive bidders. Engineer's opinion of probable cost was $499,060. Low bid came from Jasper Construction Services out of Newton at $404,463.50, or 23.4% under engineer's estimate. So, and was within a couple of thousand dollars of the second low bid, so very competitive bids. As a breakdown, the stormwater portions are just under $165,000 of the project, and the trail portion is just over $240,000 of that $404,000 breakdown. With that, be happy to answer any questions.
Council have any questions for David? Like the, like the price on it?
Yes.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing then at 7:44. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 22-162?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Any vote, please?
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 22-163?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Any vote, please?
Councilmember Burkhart?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda, do we have a motion to...
Not reflected on the agenda, but in the item itself is resolution 164, which awards the contract and bond.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 22-164?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Motion passed. Now we'll move on to the, to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Motion passed. Non-consent agenda, item 7A, considered third and final reading and to adopt and publish ordinance number 1076, amending chapter 99, section 99.07, establishing sewer user charges effective July 1, 2022. Any...
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We've had no comments or received any feedback from anyone at this point, and this is the third reading, and nothing has been changed.
Do we have a motion to approve third and final reading and to adopt and publish?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7B, consider second reading of ordinance number 1077, an ordinance amending the official zoning map for 60.86 acres, including the center line of the adjoining right-of-way from AR to IC. The subject property is located east of Highway 141 at the northwest corner of Northwest Road Drive and Northwest 110th Court, PZK's 2213. Clayton?
There have been no further public comments and no changes since first reading. Applicant is available in the audience if there's any questions.
Council have any questions for Clayton or the applicant?
I just want to acknowledge, I noticed at the end of our last meeting, you guys, I thought did a really nice job of going out of your way to reach out to the folks who were at the meeting raising concerns, to introduce yourselves, share your contact information, and really appreciate that, and working to try to address their concerns. I just wanted to note that.
Any other comments or questions, council? If not, do we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 1077?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7C, consider resolution number 22-157, approving the site plans for Westfield Commons at 5519 Northwest 88th Street. Clayton?
Good evening. There's a site plan for three office warehouse buildings on Northwest 88th Street. This is Northwest 88th Street, if you're not familiar, is north of Northwest 54th Avenue, west of Northwest 86th Street, kind of back behind the building that has the James College in it. This property, it was plotted back in 2003. There was originally a site plan approved in 2007. Construction on the first building commenced into the footing stage. Then the recession happened in 2008, and that project fizzled out. So it's been sitting, that site's been sitting there with a footing in the ground, and that's it since about 2008. There was an approval for Setpoint Mechanical to locate their facility there back in 2020, but Setpoint Mechanical decided to move up to Windsor Office Park after not being able to rectify some private easements that were on the property. That is not an issue with this site. So that's kind of what, what gets us to today, you know, a little bit of the background there. Property is currently zone C2, community retail commercial, and as proposed, all the bulk requirements are in compliance for the site. That site will be accessed from Northwest 88th Street, and it will include continuation of the public sidewalk along, around the cul-de-sac bulb. There is a small gap on the west adjacent property. Staff has already made contact with that, that property owner to have them rectify that, since they should have put in that, their section of sidewalk, and for some reason, it never got installed. So we're working with them to get that rectified with the site to complete that, that loop. Parking on the site will be all common parking for the, for the facility, so anyone can park really anywhere and would meet all of our requirements. And the site will have access to all public utilities, water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and have proper fire protection. Drainage for the site will be to a basin on the northern side of the site that was previously constructed, and they will be addressing some water quality on the site as well within some modifications to the site. Architecture for the building, our standards are that 75% of the wall area excluding glass has to be permanent material. That's a combination of brick, architectural concrete panels, textured concrete block, or architectural steel panels, or stone panels. And the proposed architectural materials is in compliance with cultured stone and metal panels, and all of that meets our architectural standards. There is a 30-foot buffer requirement between this site and the north adjacent R160, a single-family residential. There is a existing mature tree line along that, that buffer area, but the applicant does not propose to disturb, and is, they will verify that those plants are, are in place upon occupancy. New plantings will be provided on the site in compliance with the C2 standards of a 25% open space. Staff did provide notice to adjoining property owners, and no public comments have been received to date. Planning and zoning commission has reviewed this and is recommending approval. The applicant and their representative are available if you have questions. Other than that, I'd be happy to take any questions myself at this time.
Council have any questions for Clayton?
I do, Clayton, and Mayor. I know that this came up in an Economic Development Committee meeting, and there was a strong suggestion to try to, in fact, there was an intent that they, that was expressed to try to match the existing architecture within that. This, in my opinion, does nothing to try to match that existing architecture from those elevations. Can someone explain to me how this coincides with what already is in existence?
I'd maybe defer to the applicant on why they chose the architecture they did. I would just state, though, that city code does not require that the building be designed consistent with adjoining properties, as long as it meets that 75% permanent material, which it does. Beauty is in the eye of the beholder, so maybe I'd defer to the applicant at this time, or after we get through other questions to...
Certainly.
To let them give their justification.
I would just, I mean, I would acknowledge that we did bring that up at the economic development, but I, to be honest with you, I couldn't tell you what the elevations or what the buildings look like in that area. I don't know that they're in, in any way unique, or there's certainly no design overlay in that part of the community, in that section. And Clayton's correct. I mean, basically, as long as you meet the basic thresholds of 25% of this material, that material, you're free to choose materials you want. That being said, I certainly don't, I think encouraging them to consider something that maybe matches the neighborhood is, is not, is not inappropriate, but it's not, I'm not sure it's a major sticking point for myself, so...
Does the applicant have any comments?
My name is John Nealon. We did, sorry to address your call.
We did, uh, sorry to address your comment, we did read the comment, um, and I understood it as a, take it under consideration, not a requirement. So back to answering the question, why did we not do anything about it? When we looked at purchasing this property, one of the detriments to it and why it has sat vacant for so long is that it's very hard to go into an area like that and put a brand-new building and then try to get rates, uh, that would be somewhat competitive because everything's depreciated in that area. And the existing buildings that are over there are, um, have bricks surrounding the entire buildings. And so what we tried to do is look at it kind of from a cost-benefit ratio and say, if it was right in line with all the other buildings, it would kind of stick out like a sore thumb. But could we take this and apply a little bit different architecture, a little different concept to it? Because it is on the very end of the cul-de-sac and somewhat segregated. And then apply something that might be a little more modern-looking and might appeal to a different kind of clientele, and so how do we differentiate the building in the market to try to be? It, it wasn't, um, it was not ignored. If it was a requirement, we did ask about that at the very beginning, we would not have proceeded with the project. We would never purchase land, it just didn't work. So, again, back to why it sat there so long.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Clayton or for the applicant? If there are no other questions or comments, then do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two dash one forty-seven?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? It's, that is a five, yes.
I-
Two dash one fifty-seven.
Mayor, I do want to make a couple more remarks. I, I fully understand where the legality comes in as far as obligation and requirement. I, I don't necessarily feel like what was brought before the, uh, committee as far as intentions of trying to make it match. That was expressed even before I expressed interest in trying to do so. So, to, to some extent, I, I, I don't feel like, um, these conversations, um, went in the same direction. It will not match, uh, you've acknowledged that. And, uh, if you want to take a Google Street View down that eighty-eighth street, you will also, uh, realize that it will not match. And so cohesively, um, we don't have an obligation to do so. But I also want to make sure that we're providing, um, an aesthetic that is, uh, appropriate for the environment.
And I would just, uh, comment in response to that is that, even though it doesn't match exactly, it doesn't necessarily not fit within what we otherwise see out there, so it could be, it's, it's, it may not be consistent, but it's not uncomplimentary to what, what exists there.
We can disagree on that. Yeah, I guess I, you know, I would add, I mean, I think, I think of Windsor Office Park. Those, none of those buildings necessarily match, and I don't see that as necessarily a detriment. I think frankly, they've done a great job of a lot of really interesting buildings, so. You know, I, I think that the, the developers, you know, we have requirements, we have, they've met those requirements. I don't recall that when they came to the city, they said, if we do this, we'll make it match. I don't, that's not how I recall the conversation going. It was more of, that to me was a secondary point, but maybe I'm remembering that wrongly.
But back to Clayton's initial comment. The beauty is in the eye of the beholder, so we, we can, we can agree to disagree. Adam?
Just like to point out, Council, uh, we did have an Economic Development Committee conversation, uh, request for TIF. That was supported by the committee with feedback of, uh, trying to tie this into the rest of the eighty-eighth street properties. Uh, we are in the process of drafting that development agreement. It's proposed to be a five-year, sixty percent TIF rebate, uh, tying in the three potential site plans for this. Uh, so if there's further conversation, we can take this to a session and discuss further before we draft that development agreement. But that is, at this time, moving forward in the process for Council consideration, and that would be something you would have, you know, obviously the, uh, the authority to make a decision on whether that's appropriate given the design.
Thank you, Adam. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we do have a motion and a second. Any vote please?
Councilmember Burkhart?
No.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Motion passed. Thank you. And we have one more item under the non-consent agenda, and that is to consider approval of claims in the amount of two million, thirty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Any vote please?
Councilmember Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to city administrator comments, Jim?
Got a couple of comments this evening. First of all, we have a, a project or a, a bond issue that's going to come to the city council here in the next month or so, and it has to do with the Life Serve Blood Center. And what they're requesting for the city is to do conduit financing for their project that's going to be at the corner of Johnston Drive and, and Merle Hay Road. And what that means, it's, it's a way that, um, businesses or organizations that are nonprofit, they can take advantage of some of the tax benefits of federal tax by utilizing the bonding authority for cities. The city in, in supporting this is not, um, committing to, uh, any type of funding requirement obligation. They, they're totally responsible for paying the, the, um, cost of the, uh, project, but it, it's just a way that they use our, the ability for the, them to use the city for their bonding so that they can get better tax, uh, benefits. And so, um, I do have a, a letter that was prepared by, um, Dorsey, a Dorsey Law Firm that is representing the, um, uh, Life Serve Blood Center. What I'm going to do is I'm going to send that to the city council for your review. It, it does a great job in, in talking about, um, the advantages of, of this type of financing for the business. Um, and actually, we've done it a couple of times. We did it in support of the, the, um, Science Center at one point in time, and we also did it in support of a, um, on, uh, senior living complex on, on, um, I think Hickman Drive or somewhere. What was it?
Calvin.
Calvin Community, yes, we did it in support of Calvin Community, thank you. So we have done this before, it's not uncommon for cities to support this one. I particularly like this one because it is a business that's going to locate in Johnston and, uh, one that we're really excited about them locating in our communities. So I will send this out to you, it'll give you the background for this. The plan is to, um, uh, set the date for a public hearing on this bond financing that, uh, the public, this date would be set at the July fifth meeting with the public hearing to be held at the August first meeting. So I just want to give you a heads up on this. We're hoping this evening to have them come talk about the, the project and due to a miscommunication on, on our part, um, they weren't here for the work session. So we do want to move this forward and I'll give the information to you, but it's, um, it's something that, uh, I think the, that we should seriously consider because it, it is a big advantage to their business as well as to the community. So, um, look for that tomorrow in, in the mail and then we'll follow up, or excuse me, email and then we'll follow up, um, uh, with, uh, consideration of setting the public hearing at the next council meeting. Any questions on that? Teresa, did you want to add anything as how that all?
We have been asked that a couple of times recently. Uh, we have been asked that a couple of times recently and I have told them no, but that's because it was a year where, uh, we were, uh, having bank-qualified debt. In other words, we were having ten million or less. Once we've already went over our ten million dollars in bank-qualified debt for the city, it isn't going to matter if, if we have more debt. And, um, it doesn't affect our debt capacity. So it doesn't affect our debt capacity, we're already over our bank-qualified debt, and, um, those are the two things I'm going to look for. And, um, then I answer those questions and then the question comes to you folks for a policy decision.
Thank you, Teresa.
We do have to disclose it each year in our audit, but like the Calvin Community Debt Book, I keep it in my office and each year I just tell them how much is left. We just have to disclose what that is, even though it doesn't have anything necessarily to do for us, but it's one of the note disclosures in our audit.
Okay, um, I mentioned July, July fifth meeting. We will be having a meeting on July fifth, that's one day later, it's on a Tuesday because of the Fourth of July holiday on the, um, Monday. We do have a quorum that evening, although we'll have a couple of councilmembers participate, um, uh, by, um, virtually and, uh, but we will plan a meeting on July fifth, so. And then the last thing I wanted to say this evening, I, I just wanted to express my appreciation for, uh, staff and their involvement in Green Days. I mean, from everything I've seen, Green Days was this huge success this year. I think weather pays, plays a big part of that, but, um, uh, it seemed like every event was well-attended and, um, you can, I mean, all of our departments, public works, parks, police, fire, uh, library, administration and, and community development. I mean, everybody throughout the process, whether it's planning for the event or actually being there and trying to, uh, implement and, and make sure the event is successful. Up and down the line, our, our city's very involved. And I, we, I'm sure that the chamber's proud with, of the result. Um, we'll, we'll have a debriefing session probably in the next couple of weeks so we can talk about, uh, what happened this year and, and how we can improve on that next year. But, uh, just wanted to make sure everybody is aware and, and, um, you know, that there's a lot of effort, um, by all of our departments to make this a successful event, so. That's all I have for this evening.
Good. City council comments? Oh, other staff?
I'll jump onto what Jim said and, uh, add that this was my fortieth class reunion, and we had quite a group come back, and the common theme was, is, is a lot of wows. What's this? What are they doing over there? Don't even recognize the town. All positive, and I, I was very proud. So thank you all.
I would just, I would echo, uh, both of Jim's comments about, both Jim's, um, comments about, uh, the work on Green Days. One other item I would like us to, I, I, uh, the last two of our work session, or not work sessions, the last two of our, uh, consent agendas, we've had reappointments to boards and commissions. We have the Tree Board, Library Board, Board of Adjustment in Planning and Zoning. And it's, it's, I went and looked at all, all of them and I think lots of really cool things. One, we have lots of people who are applying for the positions, so that's great. I think there's a lot of interest, that, that's, I think that's really healthy, that you have a lot of new people who are wanting to participate. And we're also having the people who are currently on there want, reapplying as well. So they're enjoying it, they're finding it worthwhile. So I think that's a, that's a really good, positive, healthy sign as well. The problem it creates is that we have kind of this, um, law jam. And I, all four of those boards, we reappointed all the incumbent members. And so all of the new people who submitted, and we had a couple of people submit for multiple boards, we had to reject them all, or that decision was made to reject them all, and I'm concerned about that. Um, and I really think we need to look at some sort of maybe limiting how long a term or length of people can serve on some of our, our, our boards because, um, it, it really, I think, acts as a block, um, for getting new people involved. So I would suggest as we start thinking strategically about some of these different things, we think about looking at maybe at some opportunities to, to, um, look at, uh, uh, turning over, um, some of the memberships of the Planning and Zoning and Library Board, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Otherwise, we're going to end up in a situation where we don't have new people wanting to participate because they're sort of, they, they put their name in and they didn't, they, they weren't considered. So, uh, I, I just think that's something we, we need to look at as a potential change in our process. There are people who've been on these boards for a long, long time. And, um, I, I've been on the coun, I mean, you just say, oh, you've been on the council a long time, but I put my name up for election. So, um, that's a, that's a different, that's a completely different deal. And so, um, I, I do think we need to, to, to think about how we handle that a little bit.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the ones that were on the agenda tonight were, uh, in, were current board members or commission members who were up again, who indicated that they wanted to be reappointed, but we still have other vacancies on, on those boards and commissions that we need to fill.
We don't, for, for like the Tree Board.
For the Tree Board, we had four applications. Uh, three of those four were, uh, current members, and they all wanted to come back, and those were the ones that were appointed. So we do have one person that, uh, was not appointed that we wouldn't have a, a, a position for.
I'm not sure I understood what you, what, what you just said, John, we-
We would have three vacancies as of July first.
Okay.
Those three that their term is up June thirtieth reapplied, and we had one other person that also applied. So those three that reapplied were the ones that were appointed, and the one person that also applied that was not returning was the one that was left off.
We have, but we have other, we have vacancies that we have yet to fill.
We have other boards, yes.
Right.
We have both the Park Board and the Senior Advisory Board.
So there is, there is opportunity.
Yeah, I would just say that if you look at the last two meetings, it's just, it, I mean, I, it, I really noticed it, I was, I was, in fact, I was going to make a comment at the last meeting, but we went so quickly through the non-consent, I just, I missed it. Or consent agenda. And, and there was P and Z and Board of Adjustment, and so high-profile boards where, and again, it's, I mean, the fact that people want to continue to serve, that is a great thing, that is, these are positive things. But it, but, but I think we got to think through this strategically because I think we, we really run the risk of not, we have a lot of talented people in our community that we're not using because we continue to reappoint the same person. That's my concern, and I think we need to, I'd like to suggest we make a change. Others may disagree, and if they think differently, that's fine, but I, I think it's worthy of a discussion.
I, I think it's worthy of a discussion. We do have turnover, um, at other times during the year when we have, when we need to appoint individuals. I'm, I'm thinking specifically of Planning and Zoning where that has occurred. But, I mean, it's not like we're not getting fresh blood on all of our boards and commissions.
I, I would add that in years past, I know Dave has had extras that have applied that have come over and ha, actually have joined both the Tree Board and Park Board. So we do try to do everything we can to make spots for these people if they've applied. And I, I can think of at least-
We do have a new senior board that we need to make appointments to.
Correct. So I can think of at least four different ones in the past three or four years that, um, we've shifted over just and asked them to join a different, uh, board.
And I would just like to look at it not just from an anecdote, because this is, this is becoming, this has turned into an anecdotal conversation. I'd like us to look at it from a more database to sort of see, are we, are we getting turnover? You're, you're saying we are, I, there's, this recent example doesn't show that, so I'd just like to see real data. Is that happening? Are we getting adequate turnover and see what happens?
Fair enough. Councilmember Burkhart?
Thank you, I, I would start by, uh, supporting that conversation, uh, councilmember Coe. I, I do think it is worth having and looking at some data, uh, wi, with regard to that. It's always in, uh, exciting and, uh, invigorating when we have community members who want to volunteer to serve and, and they can't. So we, we, we want to be able to do that, and especially in light of our community, uh, survey results. Uh, one of our lower categories is, uh, public input and, and our decision-making. So however we can expand that would be great. I, I am going to echo the sentiments of, of everyone else, uh, from the standpoint of, uh, Green Days was fantastic. And, uh, I also am going to summarize a point of personal privilege. Now, I'm about a year into my, uh, position and first year on, on the council. The city staff is amazing every day, not just the Green Days. And you guys do an amazing job. Again, it's testament based on the feedback that came in on the surveys, um, because of the hard work you do and the smile you do, with which you do it, uh, even when sometimes I know you don't want to have to smile. You save our lives, literally. We've seen it and heard it in this, uh, chamber. Uh, you save us money, uh, and you certainly are looking out for each one of us on a daily basis. So thank you, thank you, thank you. You are terrific, which begs me to quote the music man, though. And that is terrific starts with T and that rhymes with P, and if you have- And if you haven't looked at the June 1 email on open-ended questions, there's a heck of a lot of conversation and responses about pools. Not, not the cue ball type, but aquatic centers and recreation. So it's something you're going to continue to hear from me because there's a whole slew of the public that continues to bring it up, and especially a lot of little kids that found me over this Green Days weekend who talked to me about it. So you'll hear more.
Well, I'm going to say ditto to all that we've heard, and I will also say P and B stands for pickleball. And my sister says, why are we taking pickleball courts and using them for yoga? And I said, I don't remember that, but maybe there's something out there about yoga on a pickleball court. Anyway, I really appreciate it, appreciate the staff's hard work on Green Days, too, and whoever ordered that wonderful weather for the parade, thank you so much. And I'll just ditto all the comments on Green Days as well. I think it was the absolute best ever. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Ready?
That's okay. I think I echo everybody's sentiment, and especially the Green Days, it was the best thing, just to see people around, walking around after all the pandemic we had, it's the best thing. So thank you, everybody, for doing that. Really appreciate that.
And let me just add, I, you know, I brag a lot about Kiteon, the green being a very multicultural event. Well, if you walked around Green Days this year, you just saw people of every race, culture, ethnicity. I mean, I just, I was so proud of that. I mean, I, I thought it was a better reflection of, you know, what's going on in our community than what I even see like at the State Fair when I've gone out there. So that, that made me incredibly proud. The other thing that I would just want to bring up is that last Friday, I did participate in the Polk County Housing Trust Funds Tour of, of the metro area and some of the projects that are going on to provide family for, or housing for multifamilies and focusing in particular on affordable housing. And Johnston was, kicked off the tour. Dave Willard did a really nice job of sharing information about what's going on around here at, at, at the Town Center, but also we stopped over and the executive director for Johnston Crossing came out and talked a little bit about that project. And I think everybody on the bus was quite impressed with what they saw in Johnston generally, as well as with, with that particular project. I'll also say that Judy Anderson and Tom Luffler are involved through a nonprofit with another project over by Merle Hay Road and, or Merle Hay Mall. And David, what, what was the name of that project?
Willis Loss.
Yeah, Willis Loss, which, which also made me proud because they're Johnston residents and they've gone outside of our, our community and are supporting these kind of efforts in other areas in the metro area as well. So if you've not ever been on one of the bus tours, and this is the first time I've ever, I've ever had the ability to do it, I would, I would strongly recommend that you you take the time to do it. It takes about two hours to cover the entire area and, and they can't obviously identify and talk about projects in each of the metro, metro communities. And so I was particularly pleased to see that Johnston was, was on the list this year. But when the opportunity comes up again, I would just recommend all of you that, recommend to all of you that you take advantage of it if you can. So. Anything else for the good of the order, Councilmember Evans?
Thursday helicopter deal.
Oh, yeah, wasn't that amazing?
Thank you, Jim. And I think we should do that twice a year.
Yeah, that was, that was so cool. And, you know, I, I think everyone who participated in that say the same thing, that they really appreciate it. I know that Carrie with Public, or with Parks, came up to me on Saturday at Green Days and say, that was just one of the coolest things she's ever got, been able to do. So, so we've, you know, we've got good, good neighbors to the north of us here in Johnston, Camp Dodge there. Appreciate just having them in the community and all of their support for everything that they do. So anything else for the good of the order? If not, we are adjourned.
Night, guys.